Good evening, West Orange. It is Tuesday, December 6, 2016, and welcome to our conference meeting agenda. I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. It's always one of my favorite holidays, and I enjoy conversing and asking everyone how their Thanksgiving went, because, you know, it's a special time to remember. And hanging out with the loved ones is the most important part of our lives, you know, which is our family. So, Madam Clerk, we're going to get started. A roll call?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on October 14, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building in West Orange and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kokviak?
Here.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo?
Present.
Mayor Parisi.
Okay, we're going to get started. We were talking about family, and here in West Orange, it's a community, and we're all part of our family, a big family in town, and I want to talk about a West Orange's legacy. Recently, we witnessed or we saw the passing of Deputy Mayor, or I guess more appropriately, Chairman Mike Fabiano, who passed. Mike was a former U.S. Navy veteran, and most importantly as well, a big part of the West Orange community, a longtime resident of West Orange. Again, in his capacity as Deputy Mayor and also in political circles, policy circles, he really made a difference in town, and today, we're going to honor that legacy with a special presentation, special couple of minutes of remembrance. With that said, we're going to call our former mayor of West Orange here, John McKeon, in a state assemblyman, to come up to talk a little bit about Michael and what he meant to our community. I moved into town in '98, so my engagement with Mike is very limited. I do like to read books and learn a little bit about the history of the community that we live in. I like to talk to Joe Fagan. I like to read his books, and I know that Mike was an important part of this town, and I respect that. I respect what he meant to the town. And John knows a little bit more about Michael than I do.
Just because I'm old.
No, I'm not. Just a little bit, just a little bit. And, you know, I was reading a book. This gentleman, Bob Bucino, he was a state trooper. Grew up in Essex, on Essex Avenue. I was just talking to Mr. Sayers about that, in Day Street, the old Italian part of Orange. And he just cried, and I know that that's the old neighborhood, Assemblyman, Essex Street, growing up there, and...
Summer Street.
Summer Street? Okay. And, you know, it's a throwback to an old time, and Michael was definitely, Chairman Fabiano was definitely a throwback to a different time, and he absolutely, like I said, made an impact, and today, we're trying to remember his legacy. And I'm looking forward to your words.
Well, Council President, thank you, and certainly on my behalf, and a lot of the people here, and yourself and the mayor for going forward and taking a couple of minutes tonight to honor Mike's legacy. First and foremost, congratulations to Councilwoman Guarino, Councilwoman Castellino, and Councilman Kokviak. You know, having my biggest investment in my life here in this community, I'm counting on the three of you to continue to do great things. And to those who ran a spirited campaign and were unsuccessful, congratulations to you as well. It's not so easy to put you and your family out to be in that arena, and I'm proud of everybody for a great race, and again, congratulations. I mentioned the persons who weren't successful, because a little bit, when I hearken back to it, that's what makes me think of Mike Fabiano. Not about the elections where I've been lucky enough to be successful in our community and in our district, but the one I lost when I ran for mayor. And I can honestly say, with all of Mike's efforts, the day after that election, he treated me with the same love and respect as he did the day before. Well, whether I won or not, it wasn't about that. It was about believing in someone. And I think there's so many people in this room that can feel that same peace and same commitment of who he was. But I don't want to talk about the Democratic leader that we all know. I just want to talk about things that maybe are a little more familiar to the rest of us and to some of our families, for those themselves who aren't military veterans, because Mike was one of the tin can sailors. He had the hat Patty, right, that he so proudly wore and, you know, was a part of the blockade of Cuba, funny enough how topical that might all be now, and his military service in the Navy was something that he wore literally very proudly. And forgetting about the politics, he was just a very well-known local businessman. You know, Fabiano Roofing is a name that you still see around with the legacy of his nephew, but a place where the homeowner knew that they would get a good piece of service for the right price and something that's, you know, a valuable service. Sue, you'd appreciate it as a local businesswoman yourself.
I have a roof. I have his roof.
There it is. And it's still, many years later. And I'll tell you, I thought of him. I'm involved in a task force in Trenton regarding clean water, and Mike, through his years of public service with Passaic Valley, with the Water Commission, did great things for all of us that we wouldn't see, as it's under the streets, if you will. And I think of him and his legacy as it relates to those many years of service. Something close to all of us, Jerry and Michelle, maybe differently. Mike was a mountaintop league coach for a lot of years, preaching every one of us, whatever schools that we happened to be a part of. He was a PTA parent at Gregory and at Roosevelt, and certainly at the high school, and did a lot with that. And Victor, you mentioned the ethnicity, the old Italian neighborhood, and we all have whatever roots we came from. Mike was president for many years of the Sons of Italy. I still laugh a little bit at him when I always tease him he'd have the crown on when he was the king of the carnival. But I also think of a time when, what an event that he and Pat Sworza ran regarding their good friend, the Republican chairman of the Democratic Party and for, of the Republican Party in a period of time for the state, John Renner. And that was just some event that he had at the Mayfair. There were hundreds and hundreds of people there, and Bob Grant, the conservative radio show host, was, I think, cursed Mike in Italian. It was really an event that we all still smile about, but another part of what he did as being a part here of our community in many ways, as we all are, even though the groups might not be exactly the same. I guess if you do want to talk politics and just talk duration, going back from Mayor Cousy, you know, all the way to Mayor Parisi, literally 40 years of involvement on a local level. The board members, in the same way, friends of his that he supported, anybody from, you know, the pantheon, in my view, of board members, of Jimmy Quinn and Michael Kay and even our own Megan Brill, Warren Fuller, Laura Lab, you know, he was all a part of their lives and gave them the opportunity to serve in ways that they have and they continue to be. And of course, you know, many of us here, you know, from a local perspective, but again, forget about the politics, I just think Mike really set the stage of what campaigning is in West Orange now, because how do we do it? You know, you could send stuff in the mail, you could make phone calls. At the end of the day, it's about knocking on the doors and about touching the people that we represent, and there was nothing more that he emphasized to whoever it was, and that he just loved being a part of that and being there with you and saying, "Come on, five more houses," and enjoying that time together of camaraderie with him about everything in the world but for politics, but to allow you, all of us, as candidates at some point in time, to, you know, to meet the people that we represent and still running into people around the community, as I'm sure all of you do, that say, "Hey, you were at my door." And I think we all have him to thank for. You know, one of those candidates that, you know, that he ended up with the special prize, if I remember, she didn't necessarily win that election, but he, you know, won a new bride, is of course Patty, you know, who's here, and the love he certainly had for Ralph and for, yeah, I mentioned you a minute ago, and you realized that you were here, you know, and Jimmy and his, and all of his children, and adopted children, and just people that respected him and loved him. I don't, you know, I'm not sure exactly, you know, what or how, you know, to conclude, and as I mentioned, Patty, with the great love that you had, I was privileged to be a little part of that, because I got to preside in that beautiful reservation over that ceremony. And I just think of, you know, of all happy things. You know, it wasn't easy. We all know that Mike, from a perspective of the last couple of years of his life, really, really struggled and fought, but never once to me, and I'm sure he picked up the phone and called many of you here and in this room, and never once complained, but just wanted to talk about what he heard on the street. And, you know, I know as I see, you know, some of his best friends, Bill, Pat, you know, Bob, and just people whose he's had 40, 50-year, you know, relationships, and then think of young little Andrew Trench, who at age 20, you know, was, got bit by the bug and was a little spellbound by Mike's wisdom. So for all of us, we take away in his life, his wisdom, his optimism, his practicality, and really, at the end of the day, beside his love for people, his love for this community. And for that, we'll be ever grateful and blessed as individuals and as township for him being a part of us. Thank you for this time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Senator. Before we call former Councilwoman Patty Spango up to say a few words, I was wondering if my colleagues have any remarks to make in remembrance of Michael Fabiano.
Yeah, Council President, if I may.
Please.
John, thank you for those kind words you made about Michael, about the chairman. And former Councilwoman Spango, thank you for being here tonight and sharing Michael with us. I just always remember, you know, my first time I ran for council, you know, crossing paths with Patty, you know, I'd see Mike right behind her in a car. She'd be out in the rain, you know, without an umbrella or anything else, getting soaked, and Mike could be in the car, just like, "Patty, come on, five more houses, five more houses, like, it's not over." You learn stuff. You learn how to be tough as nails in politics. You learn how to do what you have to do, but you also learn how to be a real person, a real mensch, and that's, I think, the thing that Mike instilled in everybody. He left the legacy of how you run a campaign, how you talk to the voters, how you treat your colleagues and how you treat your political rivals, and it's something I learned and it's something that I'll always remember. I remember my times before I was involved in politics and running in the mic down at the CVS down on Valley, and just getting in a conversation, telling my wife, Robin, "I'll be home in five minutes," and I'd be home a half an hour later. But Patty, thank you for sharing Michael with us, and to you and the rest of the family. It was a great experience in my last election, and, you know, just having, just remembering Mike and things he taught us and things he said to us and things he just said, you know, "You are adversaries with your political rivals, but treat them as individuals and treat them as humans, and just accept the outcome of your election as what it is," and we do. And thank you, Patty, for sharing it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
If I could say, when I mentioned before about him, that I have his roof, I didn't know I had a Fabiano roof, because the same thing, he would follow with the car to make sure that you were going door to door. I had to show him that I had holes in my socks, because I went, you know, knocked on so many doors to prove to him. And one of those nights campaigning, he did trail me to make sure I was going house to house, and when he came to my house, he knew the house, and he knew that that was one of his roofs. So it just goes a long way, and I think Jerry said it all, and John also, about the personal touch and getting involved in the community was important, very important to us, and he embodied all of that.
Yeah, and politics is an old saying, you know, retail politics. All politics is local, and I talked about chairman being a throwback. I do recall when, and you know, it was, the drive was really that love for the West Orange community. That's, that was really the drive, you know, wanting to make sure that, you know, our interests as a community were safeguarded and trying to put the people in office that really represented the community. I do recall Michael Chairman used to have a index card with the names of every resident and a little bit about each person. I mean, talk, you know, now we do social media, and we think we have a connection. I think that was more of a personal connection in that era. And then after that, I recall helping out with putting those index cards into a computer system, into an Excel spreadsheet. This was around 1998, '99, trying to help out with that, with Mike Randuski, who was, who, you know, at that time was a computer savvy person. So, but again, the point is that it's a throwback to the connection when politics was a lot more personal with people and we represented our constituents a little bit closer. It's a different world, and I was talking to someone this afternoon about, you know, the divisiveness and how different representation has become, and hopefully, you know, through, you know, these types of conversations and remembrances and thinking about the way it used to be, we can go back and try to practice those values so that we can represent our constituents a little bit better. But anyhow, at this point, any additional remarks from my colleagues?
I just, I have a funny story with when I first met Mike. Years ago, the first time I ever ran for council, I had, I was walking the streets and knocking on doors with my campaign manager, then Mr. John O'Connor, they used to, they'd always joke with each other, going back and forth, and I just remember Mike pulling up to the car, and Mr. O'Connor had me knocking on someone's door that I probably should have been knocking on, and Mike just pulled up and just said, "Oh, do you know what he's doing to you? You just woke up asleep and lying." It was Jim Quinn's door that I was knocking on. And he was always good that way, teasing you and keeping you going, and, but, yeah, just going back to what the remarks that were said here, just doing what we've all done. I think we drove a lot of people crazy this campaign season, with two, with a board election and a council race all on the same day, with a lot of candidates out there knocking on doors, but I'm a believer in it, and going back to, you know, just old-fashioned politics and just, you know, reaching out to the people. So I know you have such a loss here, and I'm so sorry for all of you, and Ralph, I know you're so close, and he was really good, good to you, so, you know, just express my condolences again for the family.
Any other remarks? Seeing none, I'm going to yield the floor now to Councilwoman Patty Spango.
Well, I would like to thank everyone for taking the time out tonight, and I look around the room, and we've mentioned all the political people, or some of the political people, that my husband has touched their lives, but I also look, and there are people sitting here that go back many, many more years than all of us do. Joyce Del Sordo, Bob and Pat Sworza, Bill Flannery, Jules Abramson and his wife, Jonathan Goodman was going to try to come, he was from Jersey City. I couldn't get in touch with Johnny Rela, that would have been another one, but they go back many, many years, and Elnardo Webster just walked in. These people are people that have touched Michael's life, instead of Michael touching all of our lives. They were there for him. He was their true friend, so I thank all of you for taking the time. And his two stepsons, who loved him dearly, Jimmy and Ralph, and his nephew Ronnie, who was so very, very dear to him. Thank you all. I proudly stand before you tonight, not as Patty Spango, but as Mrs. Michael Fabiano. Sunrise, sunset, what did you do in between? That was my husband's definition of life. After moving to West Orange sometime in the '60s, it didn't take long for Michael to get involved in West Orange politics. He first got elected to the West Orange Democratic County Committee. He was an active part of the West Orange Democratic Party, so it came to no one's surprise that he rose to the top to become the Democratic chairman of the party. He was a very strong and effective chairman. He soon became the face of the West Orange Democratic Party. He was respected by anyone that knew him, known as the best chairman West Orange has ever had, so much that when he retired, more people than not told him, "You will always be the chairman." Thus today, and as you heard throughout the night, he is still referred to as the chairman. The absolute thread throughout Michael's political career was loyalty, and that's what he was all about. Mike was loyal. If you had a desire to run for office in West Orange, Mike was one of the people you were told to reach out to. You would meet with him. He could read you within five to 10 minutes and was savvy enough to make a decision in his mind if you had what it took to be a winning candidate. If he thought you could make it, he would take you on. But you needed to prepare yourself for the most intense three months of living and breathing your campaign, as many of us learned. He would spend months on creating your targeted walking list. You walked every night, every Saturday, every Sunday, whether it was raining, snowing, or freezing cold, you had to walk. His favorite line during the campaign would be, "Keep on walking, you're one vote behind." He would maneuver you around a district like no one else could, which is why he was known as the best street man in the business. He was the force behind the candidate. Senator Cody, there was nothing Michael wouldn't do for you. He was a big supporter of yours, and that was whether you were running on the line or off the line. He referred to you as the big guy and supported you no matter what. Rob Parisi, Michael helped and supported you in your first council race, supported you throughout your tenure as a councilman, and then when you ran for mayor, was so intense about you winning, he said to me one day, "Put your sneakers on." I said, "Why?" He said, "You're walking." 4/7, 4/13, and 4/16 for Parisi. He needs your strength from those districts, and by the way, he looked at me and said, "You will blanket both sides of Mount Pleasant Avenue with Parisi signs. I want the top of the hill covered with Parisi." So he drove, and I walked, and as we all know, Robert Parisi was elected our mayor. He was so proud of that. John McKeon, from day one, when John first ran for council, when John first ran for mayor, and then when John first ran for assembly, I can honestly tell you, oh, I'm sorry, wait. Oh, I can honestly tell you that having lived with him, John, you were very special to him. He loved you like a son and referred to you as John Boy. He always said he would come out of retirement to help you, no matter what it was you needed. John McKeon, Rob Parisi, myself, Kevin Keough, Susan McCartney, Elnardo Webster, Board of Ed candidates, Michael Kay, I'm sorry, Jerry Guarino, Board of Ed candidates, Michael Kay, Pat Sworza, Ron Charles, Megan Brill, just a few of his many, many pupils. He was so proud of all of us, but no more than we were of him, his intelligence, his dedication, his loyalty, his affection, and his generosity to others. He was bigger than life and touched so many, many lives, most of all mine and my children. So at the sunset of his life, I proudly stand before you as a testament of his accomplishments. Michael, you certainly have made your mark in life, and your legacy in West Orange will continue in the service of the many, many pupils that you have mentored. May you rest in peace. Thank you.
I do want to welcome Assemblywoman Miley Jaycee, who's here to join us to remember West Orange's legacy, Chairman Mike Fabiano, and I also want to welcome the family and full of friends. This whole side is full of Michael's friends, so welcome. Thank you for being here, helping us, spending some time, and helping us remember Mike Chairman. Truly, truly a West Orange's legacy. Thank you all. Would you like to say a few words, Assemblywoman? Thank you.
Well, first, I want to apologize for being late. I thought you were starting at seven. I apologize. But, John, come on, please.
You can use the microphone.
If we're living from South Orange, you get confused.
I didn't have the pleasure of knowing Mike for very long. Only when I think of him, I think of him being at Starlight collecting signatures. Yes, the master of that. But I would like, tonight, on behalf of Senator Cody and John and myself, we would like to present a joint resolution from the state, from the Senate and the Assembly, to you to take, come up. Those of you who've seen me present these before know that I like to say they're suitable for framing, but as you know, we're broke, so you're going to have to frame it yourself.
Fiscal responsibility.
And if you need help with framing it, I know exactly what it does, so let me know. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We're going to move on to the redevelopment portion of our agenda.
Sure. Don't want to stick around.
Welcome back to our conference meeting agenda. We're happy to be joined right now by Governor Richard J. Cody. Governor Cody is here to join our remembrance ceremony for Chairman Michael Fabiano. Governor, would you like to say a few words?
Who put seven o'clock on my schedule? Miley has seven o'clock. The only person I had it was John. I don't know, he's got info inside still? He still wants to think he's the mayor? Come on, Jack. No, I'm happy to be here for a longtime friend, Mike Fabiano. You know, Mike, he said everything was good about being a citizen. He loved West Orange, as you all know. He loved the Democratic Party, but it wasn't about party with him. As long as you were a good person, he enjoyed your company. And by the way, I got to tell you, Mike must have told me 18 years ago, he had about two or three years to live.
18 years to live.
He had a, he had a good run, considering all those cigarettes. I mean, he had a great run. He loved his wife dearly. He loved hanging at the restaurant, and he'd always say to me, "Dick, when we get started, got to get the signs up, everything else." I remember going to see him at the Daughters of Israel, and he says, "Go lean in." I said, "What, Mike?" He says, "You know, you got to eat, cozy your food there." I said, "Mike, don't worry about it. You wouldn't know the difference, not in a million years." But as I said, he loved the town, he was committed to the town. When he worked at the Water Commission, he was a great employee. I mean, that's the fiber of our country, our middle-class citizens who believe in government and believe in government as a tool for good for its citizens. And as he said, he worked hard all his life, for himself, for his family, and for his community. This was home, whether it was down in the Gregory section or somewhere else. So Patty, congratulations on Mike's life well done, and for all the love you and your family gave to Mike in all those years, and it was a struggle. You know, you've got other people who are ill in the family, and yet, you know, you were there for Mike all the time, and he adored you, as we all know, and God bless you, and I'm sure Mike is organizing up in heaven right now. I can't figure out what he's saying about Trump, though. That's a tough one to figure out. But in any event, thank you and God bless you, and let's all have a hubble, yeah, I'll be all right. A happy holiday season, all right? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Governor, for being here. Thank you very much, Governor, for being here. This morning, we're going to hear from our business administrator to give us an update on the progress on the redevelopment project at the Battery Building, Main Street. Mr. Sayers?
Sure. I was -- today I went up to buy the project today. I spoke to Mr. Buckman, who are the two people who run the construction. Again, they're fishing up the inside of the garage. If anybody's been by there, moving pretty well on the outside. The garage's being finished up. The footings are in for the RRRR residential over retail in front of the garage. I spoke to Mr. Feitowitz, who is meeting, the Historic Preservation Commission is meeting with the developers on Thursday to go over the facade to make sure that it's what they're looking for. And hopefully, that's going to be done on Thursday, so we can start doing the outside of the building. And once we get the okay from the Historic Preservation Commission, the permits will be issued for the facade on the RRRR. I don't know if you can see, but up at the top, they're starting to build the penthouse suites on the top of the building, on the back part, which is --
Yeah, I saw that. The she-walk's going up, yeah.
And they are continuing inside the Battery Building, doing the plumbing, the electrical work in all the framing of the Battery Building. So as of today, that's the only updates that I have. They are moving pretty quick. Yes?
Quick question, just a reminder, actually, for them. You know, as soon as they know what the facade's going to look like, we'll be able to get a sketch up and --
Well, it has to be approved by the Historic Preservation Commission. I spoke to Marty today. Marty said he was meeting with him on Thursday, Walker, the new plan.
Okay. Very good. Been close.
Yeah, we're there. Anything else?
Yes, Councilman Koviac?
Any thought as to what would happen if on Thursday, if there isn't an agreement on the revised facades and materials?
Well, there will be an agreement. There's going to be an agreement.
They have to stay there all day.
Marty thinks they're there. They just, they have an architect put it together, and they're going to meet on Thursday at Walker, the new plan.
They were preliminary meetings, so it's not right.
Oh, yeah, they had meetings. Actually, we had meetings here with them to discuss what the differences were. It's not a big change, and quite honestly, it's a matter of material, piece of material for about 800 feet of facade. That's really not what we're talking about.
Councilman Koviac, is this a facade by the commercial portion? Which facade?
It's all commercial. It's all commercial. The facade is, you know, the front side. The facade is part of the front side.
That L shape.
So is it of the entire lot, or just the commercial portion?
No, where the deck is.
Yeah.
Where the deck from one end to the other, around the corner.
Sure. Okay. Okay, so it's just the, right now, the footings are in there now, so they're negotiating the facade of the front of the commercial, the $18,000 --
Yeah, certain sections of the facade, they're in disagreement on the, what was presented a couple of years ago in order to get the Historic Preservation Commission's certificate of appropriateness. Then, when they came back later, some of the things had changed, and so that's essentially what they're --
It's a good idea. The facade is the front of the building, so to make it very simple, instead of brick, maybe they want it cemented.
Right, okay.
So it was the material that they had a question about, and their new plans were being --
Thank you.
Yeah, the idea is to try to keep the character of the historic architecture that was there previously. So, and it's just, on the outside, it's just the exterior. It's not any, anything that they're doing internally is not part of the purview. But they just want to try to get as close of a feel or the look or appearance of what was there before.
Terrific. Yeah, I have a follow-up on that, but after you conclude your remarks.
Okay. I just wanted to ask if, on the foreclosure at 217 Main Street, I know it had, the foreclosure itself had been postponed once, it's been rescheduled to December 13th. Is there anything else to know?
All I know is it's been adjourned until the 13th, and advantage adjourned, not redeveloped. So, for whatever reason, they adjourned it for a little bit.
Okay. Just a quick question on the construction schedule. Is it possible for you or somebody to email the council the construction schedule?
I don't have a construction schedule. I just, like I said, I meet with them and talk to them, usually on a weekly basis, and they're just giving me an update on what's going on. So I don't have an actual construction schedule for what's going to be done, what specific times.
The next time you meet with them or communicate with them, could you ask for whatever the current construction schedule? It'd just be helpful, I think, to, at least to me and perhaps to the rest of the council on what things are supposed to be going on. I just also wanted to ask about, I know you have said at previous meetings that you're intending, you meaning the administration, is intending to engage in discussions with PRISM about a redevelopment agreement for Phases Two and Phases Three and sort of that sort of thing.
That has not happened.
The reason I was bringing this up is because, you can remember way back when, the last time we sort of did a development of the redevelopment agreement and the other governing documents, Councilman Anderson and I were on that sort of ad hoc committee of pretty much weekly calls and to discuss and hash out all of these issues. Is that something that we could consider for this current?
Yeah, I speak to the mayor. Obviously, it's his decision. I'll speak to him about that.
Okay. Yeah, because I know I found it immensely helpful to try to better understand this really complex thing. I don't know, I don't know how many years ago, I don't even want to think, but --
2012?
2006.
No, no, but the committee that he's referencing, yeah.
Eleven and twelve.
Yeah.
That's fine, I just --
Thank you. Yeah. Just a quick follow-up on that issue of the commercial component. And Mr. Gross, maybe can help us. Part of the financing that the municipality is providing is for improvements to the utility lines? Is that accurate?
It's got various infrastructure.
Right, for various infrastructure, but is not necessarily utilities, like sewer connections or?
It's going to be a lot of different things. It could be the street paving, it could be the construction connection.
So we're getting close to that, that's my point.
Yes.
We're probably getting close to eventually the township.
I mean, once they get the permit issued for the facade in the building, I think that's probably when we may be discussing that.
And that's, yeah, that's going to come up here.
That's what I would think.
Right, because that's the first time that the township will be asked to make a contribution to this, to this project.
Correct.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman McCartney?
I don't have any questions. I look forward to the Thursday meeting, because I know it was really principle that the Historic Preservation Commission, that it seems like it was no malice involved, it was just an upgrade that the redeveloper was trying to do with the facade, but it wasn't really the approved plan. So I'm hoping that all of that gets resolved.
I'm pretty sure it's going to be resolved.
I'm sure it will.
I mean, we've had some negotiations going back and forth the last month, and it seems like everything's pretty much going to be ready.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sayers.
You're welcome.
Council liaison announcements. Any council members wish to address public announcements? Yes, Councilwoman Castellano?
Well, and sticking with facades, we had a friend at the library board meeting last night, and what's the timeframe on the facade for the building?
They, I believe the steel was delivered maybe yesterday?
Okay.
Or the day before, so I'm pretty sure that their next move is going to be putting up the facade. Everything else is basically done.
They're trying to, I assume, get it done as soon as, are they going to be able to while they're permitting, or?
Yeah, they're working. They're out there every morning. I mean, today, for some reason, they had some issues and they couldn't do what they needed to do, so I'm not sure what it was.
But they now have the steel, because last week, I guess, what they were saying last night, they tried to deliver the steel and they couldn't.
They had a problem.
Yeah. Okay, so good, so that is going to be done. Okay, that's my only question on that, looking forward for that. And I just, I know Ms. Brill is here, so I'm sure she'll make a few of her own announcements, but I want to thank her for all her hard work. The past week, you really outdid yourself with Small Business Saturday and Restaurant Week, and topping things off with the holiday, I keep wanting to say bizarre, but our holiday December 3rd celebration, so nice job with the trolley rides and everything. And thank you to Anthony Nerebo from Hazle MPTA, was our DJ for Saturday. He came in when we had a change of plans. And of course, to Joe Fagan, with all his wealth of knowledge, always entertaining our residents. Also, I'd like to, let's see here, announce we have a senior citizens' holiday party Wednesday, December 28th, from 11:00 to 2:00, at The Manor. So you can reach out for some information about that to sign up. Hopefully, all will go and enjoy. And also, nice job, Councilwoman McCartney, with the community luncheon, the Thanksgiving luncheon. That was very nice this year, as usual. Was a nice day. And also, congratulations to the Recreation Department for the tree lighting. It was a great success, a lot of feedback. Perry Bashkov's working really hard with the social media, getting that out there, so thank you to him as well, trying to get all our events out. We will be having a meeting Thursday night for the, I keep wanting to say our Promotions Committee, but a PR Commission meeting. So we'll be looking to plan our calendar for the coming year to promote some more events throughout the township, so that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Council President?
Who's next? Councilman Koviac?
Just two quick announcements. I just wanted to follow up on Councilwoman Castellano's mention of the library. By, as of the end of November, the Friends of the West Orange Public Library have raised more than $15,000 for the library in less than a year, done some really outstanding work. We've gone over 125 memberships of people who are supporters of the, beneficiaries of the library, and these memberships, by the way, make great Christmas and holiday gifts. You can go to westorange, I'm sorry, w-o-p-l.org and click on the purple box at the top that says Friends. And we should, within the next week, certainly within the next two weeks, have a function on the website.
Yes.
So that you can not only apply online, but you can also pay online. So we think that will make it a whole lot easier for folks to sign up. And then the other thing I want to talk about is Relay for Life. The Planning Committee is meeting tomorrow, Wednesday, December 7th, at 6:30 at the Wiltshire Grand. It's at someplace called the Private Study Room, somewhere on the first floor. I guess we'll try to find it. I realize by the time people see the video of the meeting, the Relay for Life meeting will be passed, but I do want to keep it on people's front burner, because we're looking to put together the event for the spring, and we need people who can help. It's a wonderful time of the year when people are looking about to do gifts, and I can't think of things that are much more important than helping to give the life of giving, giving yourself to help prevent cancer for other people.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Councilman. Again, Council President, thank you. My congratulations again to our wonderful West Orange Downtown Alliance for a fantastic holiday weekend, holiday open house. The trolley rides were a huge success, and we got to do a little tweaking for next year, but we had an overload, you know, standing room only, and it was really great, and people had just wonderful comments to make. And we'd like to thank the County of Essex and the County Executive for allowing us the use of the holiday trolley from the zoo, and we really appreciate that. Also, we have to say thank you to Vienna Music School, a Main Street vendor, who supplied the wonderful music and the choral renditions for the holiday tree lighting, so we'd like to thank them. It's nice to see our vendors getting involved downtown. The kids had a great time. Thank you Santa Claus for being all over the place on Saturday. So it was really good. Restaurant Week was a tremendous success, talking to a number of the different restaurants, said the business really picked up, and people were very, very happy with the results and the menu. So we've really struck on something really, really good, and we have to move it forward. The next thing coming up is, of course, is the West Orange Arts Council's annual holiday boutique and small works sale event, which will be held on December 3rd and 4th, 10th and 11th, and 17th and 18th, done by their offices and their building down Luna Stage. We hope you can get out there, and they're looking for vendors also. So any information, you can do info at westorange, W-O-A-R-T-S.org for more information. So vendors out there, you want to sign up for it, they're looking for it. And also for our residents, it'll be a nice event to fill out your holiday shopping. And again, of course, thank you to Megan and the great Downtown Alliance, and our vendors and our merchants. Small Business Saturday, from talking to about 20 vendors, said it really turned out better than they expected, more so than last year. You know, we thank, you know, Susan Anderson, you know, for the publicity and the assistance, of course, Perry Bashkov, to help these things move forward. And the more and more people see what's going on, we also want to thank the Department of Public Works and everybody else for decorating Town Hall and the Tree. And we had a great turnout, and the gentleman won the TV twice. I wish I could remember his name, this year and last year. So, same guy.
After the fourth poll.
Right, after the fourth poll. So I hope everybody has a great holiday season, and make use of our vendors downtown. There's a lot going on, and we look forward to bigger and greater things next year. Thank you, Council President.
Councilman, thank you very much. And you mentioned Santa. Santa's going to be at Holy Trinity Church on Sunday, December 18th. We have a toy giveaway at the church in the basement, hosted by the West Orange Hispanic Foundation, 501(c)(3) nonprofit. So again, on behalf of Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez, he'd like to invite the community to Holy Trinity Church, Sunday, and the town council, the mayor, Sunday, December 18th, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m., Holy Trinity Church, 315 Main Street. Face painting for the kids, there's going to be toys, and of course, a special visit by Santa, who's been real busy this season so far, and we only started December. He was at St. Joseph's Church on Sunday, hanging out in the afternoon there, as they celebrated 85 years as a congregation, St. Joseph's Church. I saw Councilman Koviac there. So anyhow, that's, I also, speaking of the West Orange Foundation, before I yield the floor to Councilwoman McCartney, I do want to mention that Code Enforcement Officer Will Ordones came by to the West Orange Foundation meeting this past Friday, and he was wonderful, educating residents on code enforcement issues and also on permitting. And I just want to thank the administration for making him available. We had a, we had a good turnout, and the fact that Will stayed for over two hours just talking to community members tells us that that's information that's definitely needed for any resident of the town, any homeowner of the town. So again, thank you very much for making him available. Councilwoman McCartney?
Thank you. It's an excellent educational outreach from Will. It's a great idea. Another educational outreach, as you know, last month, I went to the League of Municipalities Convention, and I found out that there is a local access channel called, or station called Aging Insights. It's a show, there are 63 programs, they're free. They're produced from the New Jersey Foundation for Aging, and they are sending me information on this. This could be on our Comcast 36 and FiO's 45 channels. They look very interesting from the information that I read about it. Councilman Guarino mentioned the Arts Council. After many years of dedicated service, Carol Lemon Black is stepping down as chair, and Patricia Matrano is the new appointed chair. Very exciting, a lot of good ideas coming out. And one such is an invitation to the public to come to their holiday party on Friday, December 9th, from 5:00 to 8:00. This is at 551 Valley Road. Everyone is welcome. And again, the gallery and the boutique will be open during that time. I was on a conference call this morning with the, our grant writer. There's a Sustainable Jersey grant and a Green Eggers grant. So Joe, I know you serve on the Open Space Commission. You don't have a meeting until January, but there is going to be a meeting to talk about the restoration project at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue. This is a $100,000 stewardship grant, funding for pollinator gardens and rain gardens at what they refer to as The Rock, at 577 Mount Pleasant Avenue, restoration project there. Tomorrow night is our planning board meeting. We will be discussing, the topic of discussion is the Valley Road and Central Avenue area redevelopment, in need of redevelopment. This will be mixed use. The plan will be discussed tomorrow at 7:30 here in council chambers. You're welcome to attend to hear more about that. You're welcome to attend to hear more about that. And the Energy Commission, I have to say, unfortunately, has not met their Jewish holidays in October, Thanksgiving in November, with the upcoming holidays now in December. We haven't met, but at the start of the new year, what will be on our agenda, the Chairman of Open Space, Kevin Brady from our PR Commission, myself attended a Verona Environmental Commission meeting about clean energy, kicking off going solar. So that will be more information. There seems to be a great demand for more information about, from our residents about programs and we're going to look at how to launch that in the community. We would also like to start with the New Jersey Sustainable Business Registry and recognizing businesses that have implemented green features at their place of work. And a new program that we're looking at is bagging for a bench. This is through Trex, T-R-E-X, trex.com. They, we're not, we not really want, oh, I would love to ban plastic bags, but we're not going that far. But we would like to set up a space up at the recycling center to collect plastic bags. This company, Trex, collects them and creates plastic benches for us.
Material.
Material, right. So that would be another lot of things for the Environmental Commission to think about and put in place at the start of the new year. Anyone, please contact me at, if you're interested in the Environmental Commission and the projects that we're working on. There is another, anyone with the West, excuse me, the West Orange Mayor's Program for Adult Individuals with Special Needs will be having their holiday party on Sunday, December 18th from 4:00 to 7:00 at the Field House, the Toby Katz Field House. Very exciting for the residents. Oh, and Santa, most likely Santa will be there also. Saint Nick himself, you're right.
Busy man.
And Lisa Adams is our coordinator here for the Mayor's Program with Adults with Special Needs. And her husband, as we all know, is the dear Doug Adams. And their joy church of God will be celebrating their 20th anniversary on January 13th. So we can look at Mayfair, here in Mayfair Farms, doors open at 7:00. More information can be found on that.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilwomen, and thank you all for your reports and announcements. So we're going to move on to the public meeting agenda at this point. So Madam Clerk?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was emailed to the Star Ledger in the West Orange Chronicle on October 14th, 2015. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on October 14th, 2015. Councilwoman Castellino?
Present.
Councilman Guarino?
Present.
Councilman Kocoviac?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Cirillo. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Members of the public, it's your turn. Tell us what's on your mind. First hand up, back there.
I know.
Susan Lundczyk, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. At the next council meeting, the members of this body will elect a new council president. I'm aware that the citizens do not have a say in the process, but since the decisions this body makes, including this one, affect all the township residents, I feel that I can comment on it even though I don't have a vote. This body represents all the citizens of West Orange, insofar as the citizens have now three times voted for Councilman Kocoviac to represent them, thereby showing their approval of his service, his experience, his judgment, and his perspective. It is reasonable to expect that he would have an opportunity to lead this council. There should be an equitable sharing of tasks over time in this legislative body. Each of you brings a unique experience and talents to the council. We citizens deserve to have the benefit of all of that experience and talent represented in its leadership. For six years, we've been denied the benefit of Councilman Kocoviac's leadership of the body. So please respect the citizens' desire to see equity of treatment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to address the council? Yes, sir.
I would also like to speak about the matter of selecting a new council president.
Just name and address, sir, before you start.
My name is Robert Dreyer. I live on Kinzel Lane.
Right. Thank you.
Regarding the selection of a new council president, I would like to know the views of each member of the council as to what their decision consists of, how they go about making a decision of who to support. I think the voters of West Orange are entitled to know what your criteria are and how you reach a conclusion. And also, in regard to selecting a new council president, I understand that will be done at, behind closed doors. I believe this violates the spirit, if not the letter, of the open public meeting law. And if you have nothing to hide, I would urge you to make that meeting open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dreyer. And just, just to correct you, it's a, it's a, it's an open vote. It's not done behind closed doors. It's not a, it's not a secret selection. It's done via a public vote.
What about the discussion leading up to the vote?
It's done publicly.
December 20th is on our next agenda.
At the next meeting. That takes place at the next meeting and it's done publicly.
All right, you were informed.
Okay, I'm sorry about that. It's okay. Yes.
Everybody should get the top three. Hi, everybody. I'm Megan Brill, the Executive Director for the Downtown Alliance. I know that Restaurant Week and the Holiday Open House and Small Business Saturday have gone past, but I wanted you to see the desktop publishing that we've actually risen to. If you remember, the, the stuff that we used to use looked like 1980s clip art and I've spent a lot of time and we've educated ourselves on all the great tools out there and we've been able to, you know, really create some very nice looking documents that showcase all of the businesses and all of the great things that are happening here. As much as people on Facebook want to think that I'm the only one in charge of Restaurant Week and Small Business Saturday, there was a team of people responsible for that. The Public Relations Commission, Susan, Michelle, and the Chamber with Susan and the other Susan, and Brittany Childs. We all worked collectively on, on gathering the information that we had for Small Business Saturday and Restaurant Week. So I wanted to thank them. The, you know, members of the Public Relations Commission really did a very nice job. They, they went out and really recruited the businesses that were outside of the downtown corridor and followed up with them and, and got them committed to participating with us. We learned a few things in our first go around with Restaurant Week. I think it was Monday or Tuesday, I started to panic that we weren't getting enough action out there. If you look at Facebook, the businesses that had their own social media network already established were getting 40 and 50 impressions and people seeing their posts, but the businesses that didn't have any internet presence at all were getting like four. And I panicked and I talked to Michelle and Susan and we were able to put some money behind the Facebook ads and we ended up getting 15,000 impressions on, for, you know, from like Tuesday to Sunday, which is pretty amazing. And the businesses that had, that already had an internet presence really did well. The ones that didn't were itching them up. So overall, I'm very happy with the way things came out. There, there's a little bit of tweaking that we need to do with it and we definitely need to bring more businesses in and we need, you know, participants to go out and shop and spend money in those stores. So I think our biggest hit overall was Kim Sushi, had the most action on their Facebook post and it truly is one of, I think, everyone's favorite restaurants. The, John McElroy was going to come in and say this part, but I think it's important, so I'm going to say it. He wasn't able to attend. We hear a lot of times that people from, like Danny Scavone from the Property Tax Card, our, you know, Shopper's Orange card, they say, they go into all these other towns and they want to find the Downtown Alliance, they want to find the Megan Brill, they need the Mike Brick. Like, who is us in these other towns? And when they find people like us, the programs end up being successful. When they don't, they fall short. We had, The Poor House is our, you know, one of our greatest bars downtown. They opened up a second location in Garfield and we just met with Anthony during Restaurant Week. And Anthony said, he called like 15 different people in Garfield to find the Megan and, and I, like, I didn't want to say that because I don't want to be like stuck up, but it's not, it's not just me, it's our organization. He was, they were looking for somebody to do what we do and they don't have them. So we have a really unique thing going on and we truly are a lot more people than just me. I know I stand up here, Councilman Guarino lets me, you know, do the whole downtown spiel, but I think it's important that you understand and our vote, our budget's coming up for vote next, next meeting, that truly what we do is really special and it isn't just me or the 11 trustees, it's now 100 people that care about, you know, the things that we all care about and are moving our organization and the township and especially downtown, you know, forward. The last thing I want to tell you is, is something, another really special thing that I think is great about the West Orange that I see and the West Orange that I get to see. We, I got a phone call from Foncel, who is the owner of Purchased Possessions. He is the store owner on the corner of Washington and Main Street. It was the building that had the tow truck go through it. Well, on Thanksgiving morning, they had a fire in the basement and they lost their furnace and their water, hot water heater. Because there was no heat and hot water in the building, the stores had to leave and the tenants needed to leave. So one of the stores was the clothing store and retail in December is it. I think he makes more money in December than he makes all year, every month and every other part of the year. So the nail, the hair salon was able to move across the street. She merged into, got a chair in one of the other businesses, which I think is wonderful. She's competitor. And she said, no, take my chair. The friendware guy, Sean, was able to work out of his house, although John McElroy did offer, you know, come share a spot in his store. So we were left, you know, what does Foncel do? He's got all these clothes, there's smoke damage in his, you know, in his building. He was wrecked on Friday morning when he called me. And I said, well, I know a guy that's just a couple stores down the street from you. Let me see what, you know, what we can do. And we were able to hook Foncel up with Joe Scalimoni, whose family is the Walter Smith family. They own that strip of stores from like 270, 270, 257 Main Street. It's where the wagon wheel is. The store right next door is about 500 square feet and Joe had been working on it, but it wasn't ready to go. So they hooked up and we were able to get the township to expedite their, their plan and we were able to get Foncel moved in. They worked out a deal, we needed to get the COs done. Joe needed to put a toilet in the, the store. There was a toilet there, it wasn't nice enough, so he wanted to replace it. I was like, I don't care, any toilet, just put a toilet in. So Friday night, when I was leaving Washington School at like 10 o'clock at night after decorating for the holiday open house, I go past the store and the lights are on and Joe's working in the store and I had to stop. And I shouldn't have stopped because he kept me there for like an hour, showing me all the great stuff that he was doing in all the stores in that, in that corridor. So it's not their nature to give short-term leases to anyone. They have to go through a, you know, the lawyer had to, you know, create a lease for Foncel and, and they did it because we asked them to, they did it because they were trying to be a good neighbor. And I think that's what's orange that I love about our town and because we were able to fit folks together, because our ears to the ground, we were able to make that happen. And now Foncel hopefully will, will, will save his holiday, you know, selling season and, and we'll have a great downtown Christmas. So that's my, that's my story. Thank you for listening and I really appreciate you guys and all your help with everything that we did last week. It was a really nutty week. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Over. Great job.
Who's next?
My name is Adriana Pariona. I live at 13 Cross Street and I'm here to represent my parents, Jairo Lopez and Rosario Lopez. My father is 82 years old and my mom is 74 years old. So we are requesting a handicap parking stall in front of my house because in the, you know, the side of the valley, especially my street, we have a lot of problems with parking. I've been living in West Orange for 18 years. My parents have been living here for 14 years. And during all these years, we noticed that is, this, all this, all this area there is two family houses, even three, because we have like three apartments. At this point, we have seven cars just for my house. My kids are growing up, everyone has a car. My neighbors have kids, their kids also have their own cars and there is a lack of parking on the street. Every day is like almost fighting for people to get a parking. My parents are getting a lot of stress, just going to the pharmacy, going to a doctor's appointment, just getting out of the house to make their own shopping because they know when they come back, they're not going to find a park. They have many problems with their knees. My dad needs like surgery in both knees, so he's not able to walk a lot. My mom, during these two years, she had both hip replacements. So now, when they have to live in it, especially like a night like today, if they have to come in their car, they will have to be walking probably one block or two blocks to find a park. So that's why tonight I'm here to please ask you to pass this permit to get the handicap parking stall. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, can you give us that address again? Is it 13 Cross Street?
Yes.
Okay, 13 Cross Street. And I, I see that Mr. Lepore is not here, but can a member of the administration explain the process on how to go about lobbying or requesting a handicap?
Is anyone on your agenda tonight?
It is. 13 Cross Street.
Yes, I did. 13, 13 Cross Street.
Oh, okay. So she's just here to request that we strongly consider your, okay, got it. So the application's in.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, one more thing that I would like to see, to say is, the township, I believe, is not taking care perfectly, not, not perfectly, but on our street. Like the, the garbage, I mean, the streets are not clean. I know that we have to move Mondays and Thursdays from one side to the other one to let, you know, the town come and clean the streets, but they are not.
Okay.
I'm so sorry. Like, I've been calling, I call, my neighbor calls. Like, right now, there is one whole pile of leaves that they are taking one car space from us on the street.
Okay.
And I don't want to be calling every week.
Sure.
And I would like, please, the council, get the town, take care of our street. They clean both sides of the street, please, because it's really, on winter time, when it snow, oh my God, it's crazy.
Yeah.
It looks, I've been saying many times, looks like I live in Orange, not in West Orange.
Sure.
If, please, the town, don't take care of us. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your community pride and you're at the right forum. The business administrator's here and he's taking notes and he's going to make sure that your issues are addressed, okay, ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes.
One of my other hats is, actually, I cover the Board of Education meetings.
Can you state your name?
I'm Alan Grossman for North Cushing Place. I, well, actually Laura Lab brought this up and I, being a subteacher as well at the West Orange High School, Alyssa Drive there is really an accident waiting to happen. It's really a mess over there. Kids trying to come out after they're coming out of school, all the- Kids trying to come out after they're coming out of school, all the cars are backing up, they can't get on the Pleasant Valley Way as traffic is coming across. I, I was told it's a county road for whatever reason, but maybe if you and the Board of Ed got together and really pressed the issue, it's really, even a cop doesn't wanna stay there, it's so dangerous. And I've even tried to get out, it's virtually impossible at the end of the day there. So, and even, even after people leave, it's, you know, getting that, through that traffic is very bad. So, I would definitely, if you and the Board of Ed maybe can get together and press it again, 'cause it's a very bad situation at Alyssa Drive and Pleasant Valley Way.
Thank you very much. Yes, Rosary.
Uh, I have a couple of issues to talk about tonight. One is the senior and disabled transportation to doctors. Recently, an exceptionally large number of doctors moved from seven forty-one Northfield Avenue to the Ambulatory Center in Livingston. West Orange doesn't transport out of the township. The facts are, a large number of seniors have multiple doctors who have moved and they have very few choices on how to get transportation. One is pay for a taxi, two, use the county transportation, or three, use New Jersey Transit's Access Link. Taxis are out for most seniors, they can't afford the fare. Access Link will only transport people who cannot walk to public transportation and if they approve an application, they, Access Link or New Jersey Transit, calling to arrange for appointments is in total experience and futility. And get approved, try to get through on the phone, forget it. People have been known to spend hours just trying to arrange appointments. The county transport, there's an application process with the county, which is not as rigid as with Access Link, but there's the same issue of spending hours on the phone to get through. It's not unusual to hold forever, it seems, to most people. Time expires, the call disconnects, they have to dial, get back in and get back in the queue, so they start all over again. It's a continuing process. Seniors spend hours each day calling doctors, medical facilities, drugstores and Medicare. All are really time-consuming and frustrating and it's not unusual for them to give up and not make appointments. And this was documented at the doc conference I went to where they're taking statistics documenting the death rate is rising with people because they're not mobile. Now, I've been pursuing this issue for more than a year. I spoke with Mr. Sayers last week and he was going to follow up and get back to me. He hasn't. Uh, he, Mr. Puglisi told us both that the county can handle the extra volume, but the problem of making appointments still exists. I met with five county directors a year ago and they suggested a remedy, and I suggested a remedy to them for the problem. They were amenable to it, they're receptive. Mr. Sayers was supposed to get in touch with them. I don't know whether he ever did, nothing ever happened. What I heard is that it dropped on our end. The county was willing to work out something. Um, now, I've been getting calls from seniors asking for help and it's very sad when they can't get there. I spoke to Jack last week. I'm winding up taking this woman to the doctor up in the Ambulatory Center. Same thing with another gentleman who called. He has to go back after surgery, just got out of the hospital. And it's sad. It's really sad. I mean, to hear the, the plight and the plea and what they have to deal with. Anyhow, I hope something can be done about that. The second thing is talking about the issue of the appointment of a new council president. And I wanna read a letter that was written to the editor following the election, the last president, presidential election in the council. This is a person who's a very upstanding, reputable, respected member of our community. The headline is, "Can't Lead Wearing Blinders," to the editor. Councilwoman Susan McCartney's comments about Joe Krokowiac are the best argument one could make for one-term limits. In answering the question why she couldn't support Krokowiac for council president, she says Krokowiac and her, quote, "have rarely agreed in the four years that we have served together and I do not see us sharing the same vision and goals," unquote. Ms. McCartney does not have to share Krokowiac's vision and goals, but that might explain why our town has deteriorated during her twelve years in office. To add insult to injury, Ms. McCartney has effectively said to those who voted for Mr. Krokowiac that, quote, "Your vote doesn't count and I don't care that the person you have twice elected wishes to go out forth, wishes to put forth your wish, your vision and goals for West Orange." The sad conclusion is that the electoral system in West Orange is broken and Mrs. McCartney and those who vote in lockstep with her are a good part of the reason. I'm sure you all already know who the gentleman is. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wish to address the council? Yes, Anthony?
Hi, Anthony Puglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo this evening. Just wanna respond to a comment that Ms. Morelli made about the calling to the senior transportation, or the special transportation system. I'll make some calls tomorrow. I don't think, we've never heard of any complaints of people saying that they're on the line for a long time, waiting to make calls or waiting for the calls to be answered, but I will check into that. That's not something that we'd wanna have happen. And the only thing I wanna just remind everybody about is that Turtleback Zoo is the annual Holiday Light Spectacular. The, beginning of this weekend, which would be the, uh, Friday, December ninth, the lights are open all week. Previously, we've just been open on the weekends, but beginning Friday, it's a, Sunday to Saturday, from five to nine. We just wanna remind everyone, we have a million lights. We did do a little recount and it is a million. We have over fifty, um, winter and animal-themed characters that are illuminated and admission is free. We just ask that people bring food, a non-perishable food item for the community food bank, a new unwrapped toy or a gently-used winter coat, all of which goes to organizations throughout Essex County. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, do any of my colleagues wish to address the public?
Sure.
Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my colleagues. Mr. Grossman, about the situation with Alyssa Drive, Alyssa Drive has always been on my radar since the first day I was elected to council four years ago. It's being incorporated into a grant that we're applying for and also working with the county with our Complete Street Safe Streets. So, it's an issue that's being addressed, it's not being ignored and we are working on it, we have the statistics and we're trying to move that forward in any way we can, but do remember, it is a county road. So, it's up to the county to support us and our request to get it done, but we've shown the issue and we have the support to back it up and hopefully with the grants that we, we are applying for, we can apply some of that to a light, but do realize that, that a traffic light costs in excess of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So, but, you know, I don't put a price tag on safety, so it is being addressed. Thank you for coming about this stuff with the thirteen Cross Street. You know, handicap parking is very important. And the other thing is too, is that we're talking about what we do here in the council, everything is done in public. When we vote for members of our different boards and committees and for council president, it's all out in the open. There is no private electioning, there's no private discussion. So, it is out in the public, so I'm sorry somebody misinformed you, sir, but these things are all out in the public and those are the things, you know, that we discuss. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you very much, Councilman Guarino.
Hey, thank you, everyone that came out to talk about the council presidency, that it's going to be on our agenda for December twentieth and again, it is out, will be a discussion at that time. Mr. Grossman, as my colleague just said, that's an eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-dollar grant that we're looking at on Pleasant Valley Way. It's actually four phases, that's only one, that was only just submitted a few weeks ago, New Jersey Department of Transportation grant. And to the Lopez family, that your ordinance is on for second reading for a home. I know the resident was here also on Ashland, um, Ashwood Avenue and, and Cross Street, so that's coming up on second reading on tonight's agenda. And I think it's unfortunate to Rosary's comments about the seniors, the chamber just had a grand opening at seven forty-one Northfield Avenue and you don't think about the displacement, we're thinking about recruiting new businesses in town. So, it would be interesting to see how many residents or seniors have been displaced by their doctors moving out and many have stayed to the Ambulatory Care Center on South Orange Avenue. And if they, either the county, looking at transportation through the county, Access Link is quite difficult to maneuver and, um, and if there, if it, there is a population, maybe that's something that the administration can consider if there is a need there for tran, for transportation to the ambulatory care. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Yes, Councilwoman Casalino?
Sure. Well, you're ready, everyone.
I'm ready.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Ms. Brill, thank you very much for that, uh, story. We had noticed the, uh, the closing and I'm very glad to hear that, that things are back on their feet, more or less, until things get even better. So, thank you for your help and for everyone else's help to make that happen. Ms. Morelli, I appreciate you coming to the council and giving us an update. I recall the key period is over and over again and about the problems with, with transportation for seniors and I, I just, I don't understand why we can't get it fixed, either, either get it fixed and everybody's in agreement or we just decide that we can't do it so that, you know, one way or the other, we can get some definition. So, I, I appreciate Mr. Puglisi saying that he would check into the, the issue of perhaps too long of calls to the, to the county and I'm sure Mr. Sayers is going to have something to say in response to you and it's, it's just a little funny that you guys are constantly talking and, and can't seem to reach an agreement. I would certainly be in favor of, of providing needed transportation to, to seniors who need to get to their doctors in adjacent towns. Maybe it's something you can talk about during the two thousand seventeen budget discussions to try to, to try to get this fixed. And I appreciate your, your efforts and I appreciate Mr. Sayers' efforts as well. And finally, I also appreciate the people who came up and spoke about the council president and position that will be named soon and I appreciate the kind words. Those of you who don't know, I'm, I'm now, I'm now in my seventh year on the council and it's been multiple years that I've been the longest-serving councilperson without being a council president. And I'm certainly interested in, in serving and, uh, just to continue the clarification for Mr. Dryer, we are all probably going to be talking before the next council meeting and, and then also at the council meeting, we will have a, a discussion of this. And the, the position is basically to run the council meetings and also to develop the meeting agendas and for me, that's really what I focus on and, and just focus on the issue of, of longevity or seniority on the, on the council, but absent any, anything in our code that, that tells us what we should be thinking about, everybody up here on the council has their own way of figuring out who they want to run the, run, run the council meetings as, as council president. So, we, we will have discussion and, and we'll see what, what happens. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yeah, question for Mr. Sayers. When, um, folks call in for transportation, do we keep a log or they take notes so we know how many calls we are getting or how many folks we can assist? Do we, we have a log of that at all?
I'm not sure if our, if he does keep a log. I can check, I don't have tomorrow, but, um, what happens is when people call in and there are issues, then usually my office gets called and we try to work those issues out.
Okay. How often do you usually get calls that we can't assist folks?
Uh, maybe once every couple of weeks.
Okay. And do we usually find something to resolve the issue or?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, with all due respect, Mrs. Morelli and I spoke three times last week and I was, had the issue resolved and she told me that the woman had canceled her appointment. So, I don't know why she, she wound up taking her and told me that she canceled the appointment, but I don't know the answer to that question, but, um, I work very diligently along with Mr. Puglisi, who also helped me last week with a woman who had to go out of town and I called him on the phone and he took care of that. And I explained to Mrs. Morelli that's what I was gonna do with the lady she called me about last week. And then finally, when I called her back, she told me the lady canceled the appointment, don't worry about it. So, I, I don't know what's going on or what's not going on, but the bottom line is, is that we are working, we work diligently to transport all senior citizens in this township. And I don't get phone calls about people telling me that they need to go outside of town. And when I try to get that information, I can't get that information. I can't get the people's names, I can't get their telephone numbers, because if I can, I can call them, like I do with other people that we help, and deal with the issues that they have. So, I don't know how to resolve the issue, to be quite honest with you.
And, and Mr. Sayers, what's your number for the folks out there so they know if they wanna call your office directly? Okay, so if anybody has an issue, they could call you directly?
They could call my office.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for trying to resolve that. Megan?
Thank you, Jen.
Great, um, great, great story. I mean, what, what could we say? I, I mean, especially with the holiday season and the holiday spirit, um, just, you know, seeing our business community coming together to help one another, that's what everybody's working hard for, so, so, kudos. I wanna mention Dr. Josie Velez, our Chair to our, to our Public Relations Committee 'cause we're talking about Restaurant Week and we need to thank her 'cause she was out there hustling and had a lot, a lot of restaurants sign up, um, which gave great specials and I know a few of us have been out there enjoying them. And Susan, thank you to you too, I neglected to mention you and your hard work and, and pushing out the, the word. But yeah, it was a very exciting week and, and glad that, it was a long and hard week, but I'm glad our businesses have, you know, have been noticed and hopefully will continue to be noticed this, during the holiday season and thereafter. In regards to the light on Alyssa Drive, as, as you know, I was on, a former school board member too and it was a little frustrating trying to move with the county, but my colleagues, you know, through the years have been working hard on that. I know another issue too is, is also with the flow of traffic. They're worried about the flow of traffic, but it is a, a very dangerous intersection and one that we're all hoping that we could find, resolve. We even have looked at requesting to make it only a right-hand turn only out of there. The fear with that is sending, you know, kids and other folks through the middle, well, what they will do is they'll cut through the middle of the high school campus 'cause that driveway's open and that could cause a whole nother barrage of problems and issues, so, um, hopefully one of these grants will, will result in a light there someday and the county, but again, the county hopefully will have to, to approve that for us. And, you know, in regards to the council presidency, I was here last year and again, sitting where, where I sat for ten years, usual, the common practice is, you know, it's about respect for, for each other as colleagues and it's a decision that we make amongst ourselves and trusting the person. I know in the past I look for someone who, um, I, I, you know, could trust in, in running the meeting, um, not leak information out to the public, um, you know, respect, respecting one another and the phone calls you may hear are folks that probably call each other to ask for support and just being common, uh, just common courtesy and respect to each other. So, that's what I look for when I go to support another colleague. And sometimes it's about support to each other and showing respect to, to each other. So, those are kinda the, the things we kinda talk about and look at. And that's it. So, I know we have one more meeting, so I won't wish everyone happy holidays 'cause... So I know we have one more meeting, so I won't wish everyone happy holidays because we'll be here. Hopefully, I'll have a lot of my gifts wrapped by the 20th when we meet next. But council president?
Thank you, councilwoman. Appreciate those remarks. And you hit the nail on the head. The council presidency is a, it's more of an honorary position. It's a responsibility that's chosen by colleagues. And the word is respect. Okay? Respect for the public, respect for your colleagues, respect for the administration, respect for the hard-working public employees. So when we, and it's a personal decision that is publicly addressed, it's a public vote that comes out when we select one of our colleagues for that position, is someone that represents those values, respects the community that we serve. We may not disagree, but there's a protocol. There's a certain level of respect that needs to be extended to everyone. And that's what I look for. And I'm sure that that's what our colleagues look for. There was an article that was read up in the podium. And that's how off we are sometimes as a community. The councilwoman talked to me prior, and she was talking to me about supporting Councilman Kokoviac. That's what she was talking to me. And, you know, what my thoughts are. And that tells you how sometimes misinformed and caught up we get into this. And here's a person that's, you know, kind-hearted and really thinking of addressing and giving an opinion on which colleague we should choose for this position. And we go in and manage that. We have to move away from that. We have to respect each other. We really have to respect each other and for the sake of the community. So that's really what council presidency is. It's a position that we all, it's a position where we choose a person to represent those values as a whole, as a whole, everybody here. So that's that. In regards to the, I'm being honest.
I know.
It's honesty. In regards to the events this weekend, we forgot to thank the police officers that were out there.
Oh, wow.
The fire department.
Yes.
Was after the DPW, Department of Recreation, and Santa's helpers that were out here. So I just wanted to make sure we, and Santa. We acknowledge all those employees. It was a cold night.
And the fire department had to drop off Santa and go back to the fire.
There was a fire on Harrison, on Harrison.
Yes.
And the police department was looking really sharp, you know, with those coats, those leather coats. They looked good. They were talking to the children. And it was, it was a really nice celebration. So thank you again to the board and to Megan for wonderful, wonderful celebration. Having said that, yes.
I just wanted to, may I please, just to thank everyone that came out on that day. Every trolley tour was packed. I think at one point, people were turned away unfortunately. So we really thank everyone that did come out. Feels like a sleepover all day Friday, all Friday evening. And then the trolley tours on Saturday morning. It was, it was really just a great day. So thank all the residents that came out to enjoy the day.
And the ultimate goal is to market our downtown and making sure that the people that were out there, the people that were in the trolleys, come back and visit our businesses. And we spend our dollars within our community. So hopefully, we can continue to work hard to reach that ultimate goal, which is to market our downtown and market our community. So thank you again. Madam Clerk, that concludes your public comment portion.
Okay. We're going to review the agenda. Approval of minutes, public meeting minutes of November 22nd and executive session minutes of October 26th and November 22nd, 2016. Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions, communications, and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
None for me, council president.
Colleagues, any resolutions?
No.
Madam Clerk? Councilman Kokoviac?
Can we pull Agenda Item C, Resolution 258-16, authorizing the payment of legal fees in the amount of $129,000 and change to Charles Blough, Special Tax Appeal Counsel.
You want that pulled?
Please.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Kokoviac, you pulled Resolution 258-16, a resolution authorizing the payment of legal fees in the amount of $121,059.69 to Charles Blough Esquire, Special Tax Appeal Counsel.
Yes, thank you. This is essentially, we hired Mr. Blough and his firm to be a bounty hunter for us to look at our property assessments, to see if there are any that were out of whack, not in favor of the town, and identify them and file the litigation to perhaps increase the assessment. But, and when I say bounty, I don't mean that in any negative sense. He is paid one-third of the revenue that we realized. He also puts out all of the expenses. And if he does not win the appeal, then he has to eat the expenses. So I just pulled this tonight, and I've been talking to Mr. Gross about this because it wasn't clear to me whether we had the actual numbers right in the resolution. And we didn't get a chance to hash it out too much, but maybe we can hash it out now. Because I mentioned to Mr. Gross, he says his focus is getting these assessments identified and solidified for 2016 so that we can move into, move ahead on the budgeting and the tax levy, tax rate. And I just wanted to make sure that things are correct. And so maybe we can finish our conversation.
We can. Why don't you go ahead and describe what your concerns are?
Okay. Well, the resolution itself and the attachments don't agree. And what's interesting is that Mr. Blough has filed, appears to have filed a document listing all of his achievements and listing the money that he's saving the town, which is, or revenue generating to the town, which is about $363,000. And he gets a third of that, which is $121,000. And we have those numbers that are also in the actual resolution. But if you look at the attachment, neither Mr. Blough or the resolution appear to include two stipulated assessment changes that are going, both of them in 2015, that are going to generate, I think I've done, did not correctly, and I'm looking at the right numbers, will generate an additional $19,000 in increased revenues. And they would get a third of that, and we would keep about $13,000. So I just wanted to throw that out to Mr. Gross.
Can you go over where you think the 15 is? Because I'm looking at the resolution. So if you could just show where you believe that was not accounted for.
Okay. So the first page of the resolution lists each of the years and each of the property owners. And it gives the assessment year, the block and lot number, and the amount of increased assessment. This is in the resolution. Then it also lists below the chart, it says it will lead to additional taxes totaling $363,000 and change. And then the fee agreement with Blough, the amount of legal fees is one-third of that. Then if you go to Exhibit A, you see a cover letter from Mr. Blough. And then the next page is Mr. Blough's or the Blough firm's chart, which lists in more detail all of these assessments. And for each one of these, for three of the assessments, it lists just the years, each of them just the year 2016. And then for the property that Prism Green Associates had, this is the property over in adjacent to Essex Green, that was the former home of the pharmaceutical company that moved out and the place was renovated. So that property has been on here for the years 2012, 2014, 15, 16. Then when you go further into the attachment, you get the individual stipulations and a tax judgment. And if you look at the last two pages of the attachment, you'll see that they appear to have gotten stipulations for both 2015 and 2016 on two of the, two of the property owners, Eagle Rock Terrace and Serudo Builders. But when you go back and try to reconcile that with the Blough chart, you see that the 2015 years are not listed there. So those are the two areas that I think render the resolution inaccurate. And that's what I tried to flag to Mr. Gross.
I'm looking at the first one, which would be the Serudo property. And while 15 and 16 are listed, the actual assessment didn't change in 15. Went from, so the total assessment was $4,219,000, and the requested judgment is for the same amount. So there wouldn't be any change, and therefore, there wouldn't be any additional revenues or expenses from that. Same thing, I believe, on the next page as well.
Okay. So why would, I see what you're saying now because the numbers between the original assessment and the requested judgment are the same for 2016. I'm sorry, 2015.
15.
But they are changed for 2016.
Right.
This is for Serudo.
Right.
Okay. So those weren't, those properly were not included?
Right. Because there's no, there's no change in assessment, therefore, there's no tax due to us or to the property owner. The appeal was for the two-year period. The settlement, the proposed settlement proposes only to change 16.
Okay. And the same thing happened with Eagle Rock Terrace?
That's correct.
Okay. So I don't know if you've checked further, but does that mean that the resolution?
Correct.
And the attachments are all correct?
Yes.
They're going to get their money, we're going to get their money. Okay. Wonderful. So I apologize for missing that and wasting everybody's time.
You're now wasting our time, Councilman.
Yes, I am. Thank you for your graciousness, Councilman.
We followed.
So I have two other questions. The first one is about the size of some of the assessment changes. So for example, the Team Capital Bank assessment changed via the county tax board judgment, if I'm reading it correctly. And it's, the assessment went up 82% from what we were taxing them at and what the tax board said, went up 82%, it went up about $1.6 million. So my question is, does that shock the administration that it went up that much? In other words, that we were, we were under-assessing the property up until this point?
I think.
And therefore, are there any plans to go back past the 2016 year to do the same to, with prior years, to generate additional revenue through changing the assessment of previous years?
You're talking about the Team Capital?
Team Capital, yes.
Team Capital. The answer is, I don't know the answer to that in terms of what they're anticipating. This is the result of appeals that were outstanding. I'm not sure that, you know, the question becomes how far back you can go. This was identified by Mr. Blough to apply for for 2016. I'm not certain. You could go back again. I believe that we have to appeal within the same time frames that proprietors have appealed. You know, so you can't go, couldn't go back to 2008 and say, hey, you know what? Property was really worth a lot more back then. So this is the result of Mr. Blough's investigation. Now, you know, do, is, are we, do we think that perhaps we left some money on the table? I mean, perhaps we did. You know, we, you know, when I say that we, the township, through the assessing process, and commercial properties are very, very difficult, you know, particularly, you know, going back to 2010 with the rebound, things of that nature. But there's really not too much more you can, I believe, you can do about it.
Okay. Yeah. It looks like we're leaving a lot on the table because just this one year is going to bring us $61,000 in additional.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the second, the second one I want to ask.
Just to follow. And as we all know, assessing is not a science. And as many times as we may have some high, you can figure that we may have some lows as well. And it's up to us to be diligent about trying to find those. And that's, that's one of the reasons, you know, that we hired Mr. Blough, was to go and look at these things.
Yep.
So that we could, we could recruit.
Right. The other one I want to ask about is about this property over on, next to Essex Green that Prism renovated, and then I think, I believe they sold it all. That assessment changed huge, almost 200%. It went from, went from a little over $900,000 to almost $2.7 million. It's, it was an increase of 1.8 million dollars. That again, it's a huge, it's just a huge change.
Oh, it was renovated.
Well, right.
Yeah. Obviously, this is a multi-year appeal. And, you know, and, you know, so we, in this case, where it was identified quite some time ago, this is the settlement for now. I mean, obviously, when I say for now, I mean, this is the proposed settlement that they're agreeing to and we're going to agree, we're agreed to, agree to. And we will get that money. That's one of the reasons, that's driving the amount of money that we're getting back because it's a multi-year settlement.
Right.
Can I ask a question? Are you, I'm sorry, are you done on it?
Well, I was just, any understanding or explanation from Blough or as to how, again, the assessment was so far off?
Well, he would tell you he's very good, and he is. And, you know, in particular, he's good at identifying, you know, perhaps things that other, that, for instance, the assessing companies that we use didn't catch. So, and the market has rebounded and it may be, and again, I don't know the particulars. It may be for this particular property and the potential uses for it, let itself to more of a recovery than other properties. I just don't know the answer to that. Everything is supposition. We, I did not have any conversations with him, you know, as far as how surprised, obviously, he wasn't surprised. He saw it and he went after it. He may have been surprised to see it so low, but again, I can't speak to that. The other, the other issue though, with commercial properties, you need to understand is they fluctuate a lot. You can have, for instance, if you look at 100, 200, 300 Executive Drive right now, they may have been assessed at X amount of dollars five years ago. It's already still in rem, you know, for assessment. It's going to be now if it drops on $2 million. That's what happens with commercial properties over years. And in this building particularly, I know for a fact that this building was not, part of that building wasn't even rented out when they purchased it. And they purchased it, renovated it, and it's fully rented. So that's going to drive the assessments also. That's, now again, that's just one reason that it's going to drive the assessment. When you, like Mr. Gross said, when you get someone who goes in there and says, well, now your building's fully renovated, you're collecting X amount of dollars in rent, it's a commercial property, now it's worth X. Whereas if it's half-empty, it's worth Y. Yeah. And if there was previous history where it was empty for years, and there's a turnaround in the market, and they go, be able to go from there, there, the value is going to go up.
Right.
But I don't know, I don't know the particulars of this one.
I was just about to say, I think this predated through coming here, but I'm sure Mr. Sears was. Remember, the original assessment was cut in half.
No, but I'm saying, I recall when this property was half-empty, before they even purchased it.
It covered retreats.
Yeah. And they cut, and then when they purchased it, they renovated it.
Yeah, it's home renovated.
And now it's fully rented. So that, I'm not saying that's the whole amount of money, but that's a big part of it. When you have properties that are, that are commercial properties that you are now have fully rented, and you're bringing in X amount of dollars, the assessment.
No, just, it seemed, because it's a stipulation, that means both sides agreed. And it's just interesting that Prism, the property owner, was agreeing that essentially that they were being under-assessed.
I don't know what the rental houses are getting in here, but they're probably doing pretty well.
It's all contingency.
I would think so.
It's all contingency. The whole property base contingent on rent and revenues.
Commercial properties fluctuate.
Yeah.
Councilman Kokoviac? Okay. Councilman Casalino, you have a question?
Well, and not necessarily to this, but just on the subject matter, what about new, would we utilize Mr. Blough with new commercial properties that we're assessing?
Oh, no. He continues to be engaged by us.
Okay.
And he will continue to be searching.
Okay. That's all, that's a quick question.
Thank you. All right.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 258-16?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Casalino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Kokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to ordinances on second and final reading. Ordinance 20- Ordinance 2496-16, an ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide, and establishing employee status as a township employee and under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second. Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Any member of the public wish to address the council on Resolution, or, I'm sorry, Ordinance 2496-16? This ordinance updates the salary schedules, the salary guide for certain offices. I correct certain errors that were in place, some omissions, and some consolidation of titles. Seeing none, any of my, my council colleagues wish to address?
No.
No? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 2496-16?
So moved.
Second. Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Yes.
Okay, Ordinance 2497-16, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.1, Handicap Parking on Streets, and Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances, 13 Cross Street, 54 Ashland Avenue, and 24 Ashwood Terrace. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh my gosh, okay. Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Yes, this ordinance is the ordinance that is responding to requests from handicap residents that wish to, to add a handicap parking spot in front of their properties. We have 13 Cross Street, 54 Ashland Avenue, and 24 Ashwood Terrace. Before I ask if there's any member of the public wishing to address the council, I do have, I do wanna go on the record saying there was a resident of 24 Ashwood Terrace. She wanted to thank the council. She didn't speak English, so she told me in Spanish. She wanted to thank the council members for considering her handicap parking spot. Again, this is 24 Ashwood Terrace, Ms. Roneri.
Okay.
Any member of the public wish to address the council on this ordinance? Seeing none, colleagues?
Nope, it's a good thing.
Right, is there a motion to approve 2497-16?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Yes.
Ordinances on first reading, 2498-16, an ordinance amending Chapter 7, Section 50.3 of the Revised General Ordinances, Permit Parking in Hazel Avenue Parking Lot. Is there a motion to introduce on first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Kocovia?
Can I, we could just-
Introduce.
Yeah, and then if you, yeah, Council, yeah, Councilman Garino?
Yes.
Councilman Kocovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sorella?
Yes.
And at this time, if any of the council have any, yes, discussion.
I always like to ask on first reading. Mr. Sayers?
Yes.
Okay, so I just need, in my head, where is this little lot? It is, I just want a confirmation.
It's on a quarter of, if you go down by Luna Stage?
Yes.
Know where the diner is on, on South Valley Road?
Mm-hmm.
Parking lot alongside of the diner. There's 10 spaces there, one is a handicap spot, nine are, nine regular spots. People have permits to park in that lot. Based on this ordinance, believe it or not, the current ordinance, the only, the only way the permit park, the permit allows you to park here is between 5:00 a.m. and, and-
2:00 a.m.
No, 2:00 a.m. and 5:00 a.m. in the morning. So people would have to get up, we were selling permits to people who had to get up at 2:00 a.m. and be able to park their cars there for three hours. So it was brought to our attention by some of the people who had the permits. And we had agreed, I sat with Mr. Lepore, and we had looked at the ordinance, and we agreed to make it from 6:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m.
So they can't use it during the day, just at night?
Right. But they, most of it, but the thing is, is now they're getting it from 6:00, 6:00 p.m. at night till 6:00 a.m. in the morning. So they're getting 12 hours to park their car.
But, but is, did we need it for public parking for Luna Stage?
Luna Stage-
Is on the other side, or?
First of all, it's not public parking, it's, it's been-
Permit park, it's been permit park.
The issue with Luna Stage is two things. Number one, we went on the website, they don't even advertise it as parking for Luna Stage.
Okay.
If you go on the website, you'll read that. And as far as we, we can determine, they hardly use the lot at all. So we felt that it was better off to go 6:00 to 6:00 for the people who are paying for the permits who live in the neighborhood.
No, 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 it's the, okay, but again, the pricing on the permits is, I was looking, it's $15 a month, or?
I'm not sure exactly what it is.
That's not gonna change, that's the same.
That, that, the pricing is staying the same. And the people who have the permits are keeping their permits, but they couldn't park their cars there at all.
I just was wondering, as far as the revenue, it just seems, I don't know, low for $15 a month, or?
That's in the ordinance also, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Or permit parking in town. I think it's the same price. I, I don't know exactly what the price is, but it's the same price for every lot. So all we're looking to do is change the time to give people more time to park their cars there.
Any additional questions?
I have a question, because I have parked there to go to Luna Stage because sometimes on the popular places, it's really hard to find, really hard to find parking. And, and I certainly appreciate how difficult the parking is down there because I hear from, you know, I've been constipated all the time that, and I've brought this up before, that the residents know when our parking enforcement officer comes through, and they, they take advantage of that.
Right.
But I just wonder if it's at 6:00, whether that is being, if that's the proper way to split the difference. I'm wondering if we, instead of 6:00, could we move it to, say, 8:00?
Well, here's the, here's the issue, we came up with that. Is if you do that, and say, for argument's sake, there is someone in Luna Stage, and the performance is going on till 9:00 or 9:30, the police are gonna go out there and issue them a summons. Because the people who wanna park there can't park there. So if you're in there past 8:00, and the show's going on till 9:00, and they call, the police are gonna go there and issue summonses. So we felt that rather than do that, we should go from 6:00 to 6:00 so that we don't put people in that position. And all you have to do is find another parking space. Like I said, if you want Luna's website, they don't even mention that parking lot to park. They, they mention other areas around the, the stage to park. So that was one of the main reasons we decided not to do that. Because depending upon if you're inside and someone does park there, and the show's going till, let's say you make it 8:00, and the show goes to 9:00, these same people are gonna be calling us and saying, hey, they're in my parking spot, get them out of there. And then you're going out there, issuing the summonses, and that's not a good-
Not good for Luna.
Yeah, I know, I, I understand, you know, that we're constantly trying to find the proper balance between the residents and, and the commercial, the commercial operations down there.
Look, it's only, to me, it's only nine spaces. One of them happens to be a handicap spot that a gentleman has a parking for handicap. I don't think those nine spaces would kill Luna Stage personally. And we made, that's why we made the decision to go from 6:00 to 6:00. Because now we're giving the residents an opportunity to utilize the parking lot like they should be. You come home from work at 5:30, 6:00, you wanna park your car, and you don't wanna be getting up at, you know, 2:00.
No, I agree with going earlier. I just, I don't know, I just feel like we're trying to promote that area one way, and we're not helping that situation by letting them park there at 6:00.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not a whole lot of revenue, but I know I've pumped, I've pumped quarters in there, in that lot, just because it's so difficult to park on the street. Was there any thought to maybe 10:00 or 11:00 o'clock at night?
No. We had talked about maybe going a little bit above 6:00, but the reason we did not wanna do that is because, like I said, you'll be issuing summonses to people.
Keep in mind, later you take it, later people have to stay up to go move their cars.
Right, and that's, and that's really the big issue. And we've been getting complaints about that lot for the last year and a half. And finally, you know, we decided to make the change.
As far as the rate is concerned, it's comparable to other, other towns.
On that note, I have a question.
The fee, the fee, the cost of the permit?
Did, did you consider, consider having different hours on weekends? Since that's when the performances, on average, take place the most?
No, no.
Going up to-
They're usually Thursdays through Saturdays.
Right, right.
Sometimes Sundays, sometimes Sundays.
Monday.
So that's something worth considering?
We did not, we think going 6:00 to 6:00, after talking to the people who have the permits, is something that would be-
Because I would think that a resident, like possibly a local resident may, there's, there's a possibility that a local resident is also out on a Saturday, and there's a Luna Stage performance going on.
Yeah, I would do.
Maybe they come back at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock, and this way it-
What about the people who aren't? They're not, it's not like, trust me, the people getting these permits are not 25, 30 years old. They're older people. They're not, they're, they're residents who live in the neighborhood.
They have children too, and they're out in the neighborhood.
What I'm saying, it's not-
You're talking about 10 spaces. So there's a high demand, yeah, right, there's a high demand for those spaces.
Sure.
They're gonna be used, no matter what. And if you wanna make sure that you have spaces for residents that live in that area, you really gotta keep it earlier so that people don't get, they have a chance to get in. Otherwise, they, they'll, they'll get locked out, because they're gonna fall asleep.
Yeah, I'm just mentioning that so that we don't have to-
They have to come home at, at 9:30, they gotta find some other place to park while those performances are going on. There's not gonna be any parking, they're parking even further away from their homes.
Well, the bigger issue, the other issue is, is that a lot of the people have, have told us that they have to, they forget to even get up and move their cars at night, and then they're getting summoned by the police because they're parking on the, on the different sides of the street overnight, and you, and you can't do that.
Sure.
So it's, it's a double-edged sword. And to me, I, I just think that, from our perspective, we should be servicing the residents. And I don't think those nine spaces are gonna kill Luna Stage. I really don't. But that's our opinion, and that's why we went 6:00 to 6:00.
I just have another, because I, I live in an area of town where there is parking on the street, and, and I even yell at my own kids, like I have a full driveway that could fit three to four cars. And so, you know, are people utilizing their full driveways, or, you know, I mean?
There's no driveways in that area.
There's no driveways in that area, or the, or-
These are all people who live on Valley Road, well, there are, I shouldn't say that, there are some.
Hazel has driveways.
They can't get permits.
No, no.
Oh, was that a stipulation?
It isn't inconvenient to juggle your cars, but-
Is that a stipulation?
These are all for tenants.
Yeah, Hazel has, Hazel Avenue has driveways, and if John's correct, I hope that's true, that that should be one of the stipulations before they get a permit, that they do have the driveway.
These are all for tenants on San Valley Road.
For tenants, okay, so.
That's what it's about.
So it, it may be getting more congested because, I'll throw out this room where that diner is probably going to be open in the next few months.
That's fine, because they are, they can use it from 6:00 to 6:00. You know what I'm saying? From 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So, you know, they're gonna have plenty of time, you know, even when that diner was open. It never opened that much at night, you know, so. Plus, it's a public parking lot. We own it, so.
Thank you.
Which is why Luna never put it on there. Speaking of Luna, 555 Valley Road, it's a wonderful life now for this holiday season.
Any, any more questions? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, that concludes the ordinances. We're gonna move on to the next part of our agenda.
Which is pending matters, new matters, and council discussion.
Any pending matters, new matters, Council, yes, Councilman Kocovia?
Ask about this because we, we've approved the executive session minutes from two previous executive sessions. It would seem to me that we only approve those when we can talk about them. So would now be the time to-
Not always, it, as long as the matter is concluded. If the matter is conclu, you know, wasn't, isn't concluded that you discussed, you can't talk about it.
It's still confidential.
Right.
But, so why would we publish, why would we publish the minutes, and they're public?
No, not executive session.
They're not public?
No, not unless-
Executive sessions are not public.
They're not approved, they become, they become public when, number one, when they can be redacted and the portions could be, or when the matters are concluded.
When is that, yeah, exactly.
They say confidential.
That's everywhere, that's not just here.
Yeah, and I, I can understand that, I can understand that. But it would seem to me that on certain issues, that there are, there is a, a potential public need to know about some of the things that are going on in town. Even if you don't want to get into any detail about it, but still the fact that, that something exists, as opposed to talking about it even at a council meeting or something.
But that, that would be an argument to the, to the state, right? To the state that promulgated the Open Public Records Act.
But to the, and to the extent, you're right about that. When you, when you talk about what you're going into an executive session for, you have to state the general topic of that. And that's the extent to which, you know, the public is at least aware that there, there is something out there. But yeah, no, you cannot, not until, until the matters are, are concluded. Yeah, I don't, that's a bad, included is bad.
Mr. Kager looks like he wants to speak.
I don't really want to speak, I just, I mean, if there's a question, continuing question about this, this has been the law forever. I mean, it's a long, long time. Minutes aren't made public until such time as the matter is concluded. Usually it means the attorney, the township attorney, and I don't get involved with these things, but the township attorney makes the decision that it's no longer, no longer needs to be kept secret, and then you can talk about it. But the whole purpose of an executive session is to protect these things from the public for the-
That's not even a safe, confidential.
We already had one issue with that.
That's right.
But, yeah, I have not read the statute, but is that pretty much what the statute says, is that, is that?
It's actually what the Supreme Court has said in case law.
The State Supreme Court?
Yes, correct. I think, I think the cases, if I remember correctly, it's Peyton, I can't remember the rest of the names, but the Peyton case basically deals with this issue. There are probably other cases too, but that's one that sticks in my mind.
And, and so the Supreme Court case essentially leaves it up to the town attorney to decide when it's gonna be made?
It, it doesn't, the Supreme Court case doesn't talk about who makes the decision, nor does it talk about a specific time. It's a judgment call that has to be made. And ordinarily, it would involve the attorneys who are involved with the matter. Could be the town attorney, could be a private attorney who was hired to, to handle the matter. And, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, just a quick question.
Yes.
I assume that the municipal clerk has to keep track of this because you have to figure out whether, once they've been approved, whether they can be made public or not.
They're never made public, that's, I've never had anyone come back to me and say, make these public, ever. I've worked in two towns in 14 years, and I've never had that, where they've made them public.
Where it has happened is where somebody comes out and makes a request.
You have somebody request, that's-
And then it goes to the attorney, and they try and make the decision whether or not it can be released.
Right, I've never had that.
I mean, because you think about the volume that there is, the-
I mean, a perfect example is a personnel matter. Personnel matter is not an executive session. No matter what, when you resolve that, that's not gonna be made public. It's a personnel matter, you know, and there's, there's all kinds of things that happen in that. Now, as Karen said, if there's a legal issue and someone wants to come in, then it goes to the attorney, and the attorney decides on what goes out or what gets redacted, or doesn't it?
Right, and that's actually what I'm thinking about, because-
They're never given out as public.
Right.
You know, like put up on the internet for public review. There's nobody that does that, no doubt.
Right, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking the issue of litigation, because most litigation is public record. And if somebody knows that there's litigation, then they can decide whether they are interested in it enough to,
they are interested in it enough to, you know what I'm saying, go down to the courthouse and look at the files.
But, but, but generally, what's protected is the, the judgment process.
Right.
And so it's not, you know, the strategy that goes into these things is really never the public's concern. It's your concern as, as representatives of the public, but it's not, it's not something that individual citizens are going to get concerned about, or, and if they saw the minutes, or you had a discussion about it, they wouldn't know what you're talking about.
Right, and I, I totally agree with that. You do not want to give away any advantage you might have in, in litigation. But just the fact that there is litigation, and the litigation is usually public, what, what you seem to be saying to me is that I can't, we can't even discuss it at a council meeting, or, or I can't even tell anybody that there's litigation that I think they might be interested in.
Why would you do that?
The public sees the outcome.
Right.
And you, as a representative, you know, make the decisions in the interim as to what strategy is going to be followed, and the lawyer, obviously, whoever's handling the case, makes decisions as well. I mean, there's just, there, there's no need for the public to know about that stuff, and there's harm for the public to know about that stuff, which is the reason we have, above me, exactly, and the, and the exceptions to it, so...
Right, and I'm just trying to make the distinction between, I totally get, and I totally understand, you don't want to convey in any way, shape, or form what the strategy or the deliberations behind the strategy. I understand that. But I'm saying, on a matter that, and I'm just throwing out litigation, I'm not saying that that's what, what any particular executive session minutes are about, but I'm just thinking that litigation that is public, if people just knew that that, that litigation existed, then they could decide for themselves whether they think it's important or not, whether they want to go down to the courthouse, or if they want to intervene, or whatever else is getting...
You can go to the courthouse. I mean, as you, they're, the, all of, the filings are public. There are exceptions to that, but generally, the filings are public, and sometimes they're published in news, sometimes a reporter picks up on something and publishes something about it, sometimes word of mouth, you know, and somebody will go down to the courthouse and say, I want to see, you know, the, the pleadings in a case. But look, for the most part, the public doesn't care about these things.
You're right, for the most part, but, but, but we...
Let me interject here, because I think you guys are just going back and forth. The real issue is, our job as public officials and public employees is to protect the township and the taxpayers. So we should not be out there discussing litigation, because if we are, and the lawsuit comes back to us, back to the township, and then it costs the taxpayers money. If we get sued for half a million dollars because Jack Sayers or Joe Kogreak, Michelle Castellino said at the open public meeting, that this is what happened, and that's not true, in our case. So, from, from a litigation standpoint, that's the big issue. I understand what you're saying. You're, you can say, well, there's a case between Jack Sayers versus Michelle Castellino, and if you want to go listen to the case, it's going to be down at the courthouse, but you can't be sitting here discussing the case, because there's facts that can be in the case, and outside of the case, that could cause problems for the municipality, not, not just for the municipality, but the employees who are talking about it, and you see major lawsuits over this all over the place, when people do that. That's the main issue.
Right, and we, and we've discussed this before. But you hit the nail on the head. That's, that's what I'm asking you about. Would it, would it break the confidentiality that's under the statute to say, there is litigation going on right now, here's the title of the litigation, end of, end of story? And then people could know that there's litigation, and if, whatever they want to do about it, they can do about it, there's no...
I would just be careful.
Why would you want to take that risk?
That's all I'm saying, because...
Well, there is no risk.
Yeah, there is risk.
No, no, I'm just saying, you just give people the title of the, of the...
There is a risk.
There is a risk. You're stirring the pot.
The plaintiff, let's say it's worth plaintiff, and, and you say at an open public meeting, oh, by the way, there's litigation between us and X, Y, and Z, they're going to come back to you and say, well, you know, you're trying to get people to come down here and harass us, because we're suing them. I'm just telling you, that's the legal issue.
Colleagues, respectfully, we have professionals here, we have business owners here, we can adjourn, we can continue this conversation after ABC.
And the only thing I'm going to, I'm going to add is, you know, litigation is handled in courts of law.
Not at open public...
Not by town council.
Would you like to adjourn as counsel? We can come back.
Yeah, I need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn the council?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Make a motion to...
No, 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 because we're going right to ABC. Yeah, thank you. But we're going to motion to adjourn and go to ABC. That's, that's, that's 570-16, a person-to-person transfer of plenary retail distribution license number 072244018006, from Kettle Corp. to TNT Liquors Inc., 110 Harrison Avenue.
And since Mr. Williams has been here waiting and waiting and waiting, and I'll let him speak. But basically, this is a, a person-to-person transfer, the, the resolution indicates that the police department has done its due diligence, and there's no problems with respect to this application.
Right.
Good evening. Robert C. Williams appearing on behalf of the purchaser, transferee, TNT Liquors Inc. This is a transfer of the liquor license from K2 Corp., which is presently owned by the father of my client, Mr. Ressell is right here, Patel. He's essentially buying the license from his father, who's operated for many years. He will continue the operation as a liquor lobby, just like it is today, up at the Harrison Avenue location. We'd ask you to approve it. As council has stated, this is, license has been there for many years, and there have been no problems at that location.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any questions for Mr. Williams at this time? Seeing none. Do I hear a motion to approve resolution 570-16?
So moved.
Second. And congratulations, really, there's been no issues at that location, and helping out your dad.
Say goodbye to his father, Mr. Surrender Patel. He's going to retire, and...
Oh, God bless.
Son's worked in the business for many years, and he'll just continue it.
Very nice.
Take, take care of your father.
Can I just ask, if you want to get in touch with Ms. Brill with Downtown Alliance and get involved, that'd be great, and become part of the, we've been part of the neighborhood, but get a little involved in what we're doing, it'd be very beneficial to you and, and to downtown. Great.
She'll stop by, I'm sure.
She will.
Okay, just want to take a vote, Councilman Cast, Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sirella?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Thank you for your patience.
Next one is 571-16, a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer of plenary consumption license number 072233025009, from Mondial Consulting LLC to Heritage Restaurant and Lounge LLC. Mr. Mondial is here.
Again, this is a person-to-person and place-to-place transfer. The police have done its due diligence and investigated, and they have found no reason to deny the application.
Any remarks, Mr. Mondial?
Well, I'm just saying, well, I'm the owner of the two entities. Basically, I'm transferring from one entity to the other, and I'm also reducing the area of operation of the business, because when we first started, the, the license actually covered the whole building, but the business is only operating on the first floor.
I see.
So basically, it didn't make sense to have people, or, you know, employees living upstairs when the business is only on the first floor.
Less liability.
Yes. Yes, that's normal. So that's just what I'm doing, from one entity to another entity, and I do own both entities.
Thank you very much for your investment. Colleagues?
Nope.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 571-16?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Castellino?
Yes.
Councilman Guarino?
Yes.
Councilman Krokovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Sirella?
Yes.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Motion is carried. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues, would you like to go back to the discussion, or call it a day?
Yeah, I don't think we need to discuss it more. I, I agree with, with everything that is said in terms of we want to protect our position, and we want to protect the township and the taxpayers. I'm just asking, just the, but it doesn't really matter, because I think Cazier's argument made it clear that, that it's not something that's covered by case law, so...
Well, thank you very much for the discussion. And that concludes our council meeting.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much, and we'll see you in two weeks, West Orange. Good night.